Was it creek that goes across? They've got the widening shoulders all formed up, ready to pour that.
On the westbound side, something over the range comes down on the access.
Yeah.
Looks like they're down sometime there.
Why don't they get a bonus for early time completion? I'd like to call this regular planning commission meeting for July 25th order. Mr. Neri, do we have any announcements?
No, Mr. Chairman, not this evening.
Okay. Approval of the minutes, all commissioners have a copy. Do we have any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve minutes as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. Okay, public comment, non-agendal items, I have no cards. Want to open a public hearing, we have no old business. Mr. Neri, new business, propose final plat for block two, lot 62, 66, 67, and Majestic Point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and just a reminder to the commission, everything on this agenda stays with you. Nothing moves on to the city council. In 2015, the applicant for Majestic Point addition actually had a replat performed of lots 62, 66, and 67 into lot 62R, as you see today. The applicant now wishes to break these same lots back out. This is done under the guise of a minor subdivision, has to be less than four lots, which this applies to. One staff comment remains, which I've given to the Holloway firm. Though it's called a replat on their submission, it is not actually a replat. It is a final plat of lots 62, 66, and 67 of the Majestic Point addition. So, just a change in how they've named the plat, staff would recommend for contention approval.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Any commissioners have questions of staff on this? Is there anyone in the audience that represents his wishes to speak? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the proposed final plat for block two, lot 62, 66, and 67 of Majestic Point addition, pending any city or commissioner comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. Okay. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a little brief overview before we start. Items two, three, four, and five all pertain to the proposed Stone Brook subdivision preliminary plat. This is in the Malmell extraterritorial jurisdiction at the north end of Old Malmell Road off Highway 365. In the extraterritorial jurisdiction, we only enforce what's in chapter 70 and nothing else. You have the county's comments, they will actually do the road inspection, they will do the approval, they'll issue any permits. We do nothing of that sort. We have zone, we don't permit, we don't make building inspections, we don't even review the engineering. That's all being handled by county staff. So with that being said, if you've seen the design of this subdivision, currently, it does not meet the criteria that's in our code for private streets. It must be short loop in design or all ending cul-de-sacs, which obviously this design doesn't. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a variance regarding section 70-132B10, which pertains to private streets and their design.
Okay. And, Mr. Neri, with this, this may be a city attorney comment, since these are all interlinked, would it be appropriate to ask questions with like, things is going to go with the proposed preliminary plat? I mean, we don't just have to deal with design standards and vote on that?
I believe, well, it is divided into separate items. And so, the discussion could vary, you know, slightly from that, but you would probably want to try to keep it on topic.
I agree, and keep in mind, if the applicant does not get a favorable ruling on the very first variance request, section 7132B10, there'd be no reason to go on any further, actually, because the entire design of the subdivision, what you see before you is not going to be what's going to be reflected in the field.
Mr. Neri?
Yes.
Has the county already voted on this?
They have not voted, you have their comments. If they will not vote, it will not go to the Pulaski County Planning Board, only to our planning commission.
Okay, so... Hold me through it again, because it's been a while since we've done one of these extraterritorial.
When the county is satisfied with all of their staff comments, they'll sign the final plat first. That is the staff's last comment from the city of Malmell. Satisfy all Pulaski County comments. Once all of their comments are satisfied and they sign, I will then sign the final plat for the city.
And there is, we've got, they're deferring to us as it relates to rear, front, side yard setback, street payment widths, boundaries, all that other stuff.
Yes, and there'll be another variance coming up, one they deferred to us on.
Further in these?
That'll be item number four, platted building lines and buffers.
Okay, I got you.
Well, and that was the reason why I asked the question of Madam City Attorney. Okay. Any commissioners have any questions of staff? Is there anyone to speak for the applicant? Is there any public comment? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the request for variance regarding section 70-132B10, pending any other comments from staff or commissioners.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. Okay, Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, item three, request for variance regarding section 70-132B5. This is also a section the county has deferred to us on. This regards the length of streets that end in cul-de-sacs. The county allows 900 feet, we allow 750. There's probably four streets that don't meet our criteria. I will tell you that Chief Payne has gone over this, not only by himself, but also with the Oak Grove Fire Department Chief, and I believe Mr. Holloway as well. He has no problem with it, which is why that section of code exists in the first place, is for emergency vehicles. Plenty of turnarounds, even though they may be longer than 750 feet.
Any commissioners have questions of staff on this item? Anyone in the audience wish to speak? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the request for variance regarding section 70-132B5 concerning the length of streets ending in cul-de-sacs.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. Mr. Neri, next request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is also a deference from the county. Request for variance by the applicant from section 70-136A, platted building lines and buffers. The applicant in some lots had proposed a 15-foot front yard setback, we asked for 25.
And if I remember correctly, from the 15-foot, that's the smaller lot sizes?
Correct.
Any commissioners have questions of staff? Anyone in the audience wish to speak? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request regarding section 70-136A. 72 further staff comments, commissioner comments?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no. Okay, now, Mr. Neri, the proposed preliminary development plan for the same subdivision?
Actually, it's the proposed preliminary plat for Stone Brook subdivision. One staff comment remains, satisfy all Pulaski County comments, staff would recommend for a contention approval.
Okay, any commissioners have questions of staff? Anyone in the audience wish to speak? Sir, if you will, could you come to the podium, give us your name and address?
Just curious if this was public, accessible to the public to see this plat map? I've been wanting to see it up to this point, I have property that borders it.
Isn't that on the website?
Name and address?
No. I need your name and address.
Richard Summers. 15604 Scenic Point Drive.
Mr. Summers, you can have my copy, but you'd need to share it if they ask.
If you have any other questions, Mr. Eric Holloway is responsible for the design, I'm sure he'd share anything that you needed.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Eric, could you come to the podium and kind of give everybody that information?
I'm Eric Holloway, currently I reside at 102 Daniel Circle, it seems like it changes every couple of months, but we'll get there eventually. I'm with Holloway Engineering, we are the civil consultants for the applicant, stone for Stone Brook subdivision. We're located 200 Casey Drive in Malmell Industrial Park, and like was just previously said, we could send any copies of this current plat to anybody that would, or anybody could come by our office, and we'd be happy to sit down and discuss the subdivision with them.
Okay, I got a question while you're up there. Does your client agree with Pulaski County comments?
Yes.
Okay, what about Oak Grove Fire Department?
Yes.
Okay, so, to comply with both of those entities, you have no problems, or your client has no problems?
No, and I have met with Oak Grove Fire Department, we've met all their comments.
Okay, because, okay, well, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the audience that wish to speak? Please, come up, give us your name and address. If you will, there's a microphone right there.
Twyla Rogers, am I addressed?
Uh huh.
14510 Old Malmell Road.
Okay.
I would just like to know where the entrances, entrances are going to be in here.
Okay.
Is there just going to be one entrance, or is there going to be two?
Just going to be one. And it's in the lower right-hand corner.
Is that coming off of Old Malmell Road, or is that?
365, this is an emergency jail.
Okay, that's my question.
Mr. Joe? If you will, sir, give us your name and address for the record.
Joe Gabaskin, 14424 Quinn Road, and Malmell Milling address, 72113, in the county. I just wondered if, since I've got livestock, if there's going to be a buffer around this property? Is that going to be like a privacy fence?
What are, as you might have seen on the plat, if you've had a chance to look at it? Okay, we're going to try to go, there is a 15-foot buffer on that side where you're at, and we plan to plant that pretty heavily. We've already bought about 5,000 trees that we're going to plant that in those areas that are adjacent to existing homes.
Okay, so I don't want anybody shooting my livestock.
No, no.
And I don't want them getting over on your property either.
No, no, I understand.
So, but is that up to the individual owners to have a privacy fence?
I'll let my client.
Sir, if you will, come to the podium. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Brandon Hines, 217 Lake Valley Drive. It'll be up to, yes, the individual property owners if they want to put up a privacy fence. We don't have plans to put up a fence around the whole property, no.
You don't?
No.
So then I'd have to maintain my fences?
Yes.
Mr. Joe, good fences make good neighbors.
Chain link with razor wire.
Either one.
Thank you, sir.
I think that's all I have for right now, I haven't reviewed that, but I'll try to get a copy of it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please. If you will, give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Sharon Sims in 15214 Garrett Road. We're up in Malmell Heights. It's a plan to incorporate this into Malmell proper, or is that the plan?
Currently, it's not contiguous, it's not connected to Malmell, so right now they couldn't do it if they wanted to. But in a previous meeting we had, they had no intention to come into the city limits.
Okay.
Later, excuse me, ma'am, later when 192 lots prospectively start to sell, and you could have 192 different property owners, that would make it almost impossible to get all those folks, or even 51% to rent.
The reason I ask is we live on Garrett up Malmell Heights, and we've lived there for 20 years, and we've, ever since we've lived there, we've always heard, they're talking about eventually incorporating this into Malmell, so that's not true.
As far as this subdivision's concerned?
Right.
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the only thing you could say is that, as of today, no.
Right.
That doesn't mean 10 years from now, 15 years from now, things could change.
It'd be very difficult.
But is...
Right, that's what we always thought it'd be difficult. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you will, come to the podium, please. And your name and address one more time.
Richard Summers, 15604 Scenic Point Drive. I was curious, are y'all intending a northern buffer, or is it, it's going to go right up to your property line? As far as the lots? I think it was lot 28 there that I was looking at, butts right up to me, possibly? Or well, it's .28 acres. I mean, are y'all going to have any kind of a buffer up here?
Against the Panther Mountain lots? Those are bigger state lots, and they're pretty wide.
Yeah, well, this is my lot right here.
Is it? No, we're not planning a buffer, but those are also big lots, so there won't be any development right against them.
Well, this one that touches me is a quarter of an acre lot, so that's not really a...
That's actually not a lot, that's a green space.
That would be a green space. Okay, awesome. Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the audience have any question? If you will, sir, give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jerome Perkins, 14525 Old Malmell.
Yes, sir.
And what I'd like to ask is, this entrance that you're talking about, is that going to be the only reason it's going to be used? Because I'm at the dead end. Are we going to put gates, or?
Yes, sir, they show to have a security gate at the entrance.
Okay, is that the only purpose that is going to be used for emergency vehicles or whatever?
Well, now, there is a second entrance that's emergency vehicles, but the primary entrance will be how everything comes into the subdivision.
Okay.
Off of 365.
Uh huh, okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else have a question? If not, I got one. I would like to speak to Mr. Hines. And this is just really not in Malmell's purview, this is about your bill of assurance. I've been dealing with this template for the last eight years. It's, it looks real good on paper, but once it gets to a POA, it's very difficult to enforce. Have you had your attorney review this?
We have not, no.
I would suggest that you do that. Enforcement of things with this bill of assurance is difficult, because you basically have very limited enforcement capabilities. You can send letters, you can file a lien, and sometimes filing liens doesn't really get their attention. So, you might want to think about that, and the other thing is, all your streets, you're going to maintain them until the day that the POA is formed, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then...
Are you referring to the collection of funds as difficult to enforce?
Well, yeah, that too.
Okay. We have in mind, which we need to nail down, but the formation of an improvement district to maintain the streets indefinitely.
Okay.
To collect the funds.
Okay.
That's already Pulaski County's comment.
Yeah, okay, well, I've seen that, but I wanted it from the horse's mouth.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the plan now, is, we have an improvement district now to get infrastructure there, but it will probably have its own, just to collect funds and set up preserve accounts for maintenance of the roads and that kind of thing.
Okay, and when you get to 90% buildout, and you start to form your POA, don't do like we experienced, I had to pay my dues early so we could send out mailers. There was no fund for the POA to start. And you've got volunteers, so help them all you can.
Okay.
And that's all I got.
All right, thank you.
Any other commissioners have questions?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the proposed preliminary plat of Stone Brook subdivision, subject to any additional staff or commissioner comments.
Second.
And Pulaski County?
That goes without saying.
As amended, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no? Thank you, gentlemen. The next item on the agenda, and folks, if y'all want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you can, or if you want to exit, feel free. Mr. Neri, the next item on the agenda is a proposed preliminary site plan for Domino's Pizza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, after three staff reviews, only one comment remains. I had talked to the project engineer about this, I never made it a formal comment, it was actually Commissioner Fisher that prompted my memory earlier in the day. On the northern property line, and what we would say is the back of the property, there is a shed that would not be in compliance with our commercial building design regulations as they are today. That shed will either have to be covered with a high-quality material, torn down and taken away completely, or screened with a wood fencing. Other than that, staff would recommend for contention approval.
Thank you, Mr. Neri, any commissioners have questions of staff on this?
There's a question on the cladding, what did they end up changing to?
Excuse me?
The cladding on the exterior saw?
Hardy.
Hardy?
Hardy plank.
Is there a representative for the site plan here?
Kurt Jones. I'm Kurt Jones, I'm the engineer.
Okay, and is that correct, they're going to be covered with a hardy plank?
On the building, yes, itself, we changed the, there was some corrugated metal that was shown on the building, up on the upper, upper portion of the building, and that's going to be replaced, or it has been replaced on the plans with the hardy plank.
In our subcommittee meeting, we spoke of having an outside dining area.
Yes, and I looked at that, and the issue with the outside dining area, and I think at the committee meeting, I thought that we might be able to incorporate some of that under some of the covered area, the existing covered area of Sonic, but what I did not realize was that the building is actually expanding into that area, and there's not going to really be any area that's easily, you know, convertible into like an outdoor dining area.
Would there be someplace that you could maybe put a couple of picnic tables?
You know, they could, something that could be moved around, maybe, there will be some area, maybe some grass area, that we could put maybe some metal picnic, a metal picnic table.
Because it was...
I don't think that would be a problem.
It was expressed to me that that would probably make it a little more dog-friendly.
Okay.
And generally, people come and...
And they're agreeable to doing something like that, it's just we didn't have anywhere on the plan to kind of formalize it at this point, but I'm sure we can work something out on the plan.
Any commissioners have questions?
I got one question, the mechanicals for the building, are they going to be roof-bound?
They're all, yeah, it'll be, the mechanicals are going to be in the same location they are right now.
On the roof?
I believe they are all on the roof, yes.
Do you realize it's got to have a parapet, it's got to be totally...
Concealed?
All sides.
Yes, sir, they will be.
We went over that a few times, didn't we?
Yes.
Any other commissioner questions?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary site plan for Domino's Pizza.
Second.
Subject to, the normal subject twos.
Okay, and have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no? Okay, Mr. Neri, the landscape plan?
Mr. Jones, you will relay to the Domino people?
I wanted to, yeah, I did have that question to you for the, and I don't know what, you know, with the storage shed, if they're just going to want to take that down at this point now, but...
They can take it down?
Take it down, or we've got the three options.
Or they can screen it from public view completely.
Okay, and we'll come up with a suitable solution for that.
I must say, working with someone who is not familiar with Malmell format can be difficult, difficult for me, and difficult for the applicant's representative. Mr. Jones did a very admirable job working from Russellville. If I'd asked him to do something, if there was something wrong with the submittal, second time, it was perfect, it was a pleasure. On the landscape plan, after two staff reviews, staff would recommend for approval as resubmitted.
Thank you, Mr. Neri, any commissioner questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the proposed landscape plan for Domino's Pizza with BDP Holdings as the applicant, pending any other staff or commissioner comments.
Second.
Have a motion and two seconds. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no? Mr. Neri, we propose commercial building design?
After two staff reviews, staff would recommend for approval as resubmitted.
Any commissioner questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the commercial building design for Domino's Pizza, BDP Holdings LLC.
Second.
Pending any commissioner's staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed say no? At this time, I'd like to close public hearing, we have the liaison reports.
Mr. Chairman, if you will.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman couldn't actually call and tell us that he wasn't going to be here, because they just let him out of a hearing. He sends his apologies.
Okay. With that, June 3rd, Commissioner Green?
All right. I just wish y'all had been there, man. I wasn't there.
Fill us in.
I wasn't there, I wasn't there, but I did watch it, I think it got over with about 9:30. I think 1 hour and 36 minutes was committed to the third reading of audience, 974, hazardous and dangerous dogs. It did not make it, it failed 3 to 5. 975, which is regarding parked stored vehicles passed, the table, the timber management plan, and visibility at intersections, it passed. So that was from unfinished business that they had. There was some new stuff, um, ordinance 978, which would amending, uh, chapter four of the city code, approved. Resolution 2019-13 approved. Resolution 2020-19, uh, approved. Preliminary development plan for the Diamond Park Commercial, uh, White Oak Crossing, approved. First reading on 9/69. Resolution approving the preliminary development plan again for the, uh, White Oak Crossing. That's the car wash and store down there. It was approved.
Thank you, Commissioner Green.
Yeah, I tell you that, watching that on the web was much better than sending it out.
Yeah, it, it was, it was a very long meeting. Uh, I was there. Uh, June 17th, Commissioner Smith?
And that wasn't any shorter, let me tell you. They had the third reading of ordinance 976 regarding timber management plans. The second reading of ordinance 978, amending chapter 54 of the Malmell City Code.
And they both passed.
Second...
Hey, this, this mine. Oh, your poor...
Second reading of ordinance 979, accepting dedication of streets and drainage. Second reading of ordinance 980, establishing a capital improvement fund. Second reading of ordinance 981, establishing a police and fire fund. The... Resolution 2019-10, amend personnel policies. And reading of resolution 2019-18, approving the disposal of city surplus property. And that was... That rounded out the meeting.
Okay. After I stole some of your thunder, Commissioner Fisher?
I had July 1st meeting. All the second readings that Scott had, I had the third readings, and they all passed.
Nice job, Mr. Fisher.
And July 15th was Commissioner Gershner, and you can watch the video for that. I have...
That is a good setter, Scott.
Yeah.
August the 5th, Commissioner Ramsey, and I've got August the 19th. Is there any other commission business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
We are adjourned.